Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call to order tonight's meeting regarding the zoning board of appeals. This meeting is tonight as a result of a remand from the courts regarding the case that was on Clark Street that was denied originally. It was appealed and the judge has remanded it back for us to hear it. I just wanted to, first of all, ask you to silence your cell phones if you have them on. Second, you can tell the acoustics are less than perfect in this auditorium. So I'm going to ask you to speak up so I can, the board can hear you. If need be, we have a mic right there. You can come up and speak at the mic. And we're going to do our best to talk loud enough so you hear us. And if we're not, just raise your hand, please, and let us know because sometimes we have a tendency to reduce our volume. Okay? So, in Gardiner, and we're going to run this just like it's a brand-new hearing. And we can use some of the information that was provided in the original. Attorney Campabasso can use that. And if he has any additional new information, he'll be passing that out during the meeting also at the same time. So we're really looking at it as a new case and under the same criteria that we used when we looked at the first one, or any variance request. Okay, I'm going to go over a few of the ground rules by which this board operates under. In Gardiner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representatives shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. Any other interested parties at the hearing shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board must render its decision in this, because it's a remand, after we close this public hearing, we have 90 days to render a decision per the order of the courts. So until I close the public hearing, it stays open. And then, once we close it, the 90 days start. So, members of the board hearing, the case this evening, my left is Mel Cornet, to my right, Dave Yentea. And the right to appeal, all three members of the boards must vote in favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted. The right to appeal the decision to this board is provided for in the act which is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from a city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry deeds for the county or district. The burden for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests each person identify himself or herself as to name an address before addressing the board. This meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this hearing? Let it be known there's no objections. And I just want to make a statement here because I want to keep the meeting focused to where it should be. I know a lot of the issues that have come up, the houses, safety, the traffic that's going to be generated if this is passed. All that is under the special permit for the planning board, not this board. So if we start discussion on, well, the project's going to generate a lot of traffic. I'm going to stop it. We're going to move on from that because that's not what this case is. This is about a small parcel of land that, excuse me, would allow access to the rear property. That's it. There's nothing about houses or anything else. So I just want to make it clear, if we wander from that, I will do my best to bring it back. Okay, so at this point, I am, so we have a representative or attorney, Peter Campabasso, who is going to be representing the applicant on this case. So, Peter, if you want to take the stand and begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Campabasso. I'm an attorney with Law Office located at Three Park Street in Leomince, Mass. I represent the applicant, Harbor Classic Homes. As you have, as you know, as most everybody knows, this is a case that was originally heard by the zoning board last year. A decision was rendered in January. There were co-filings. There were two requests for variance. The parcel that we are, that the development, I'm sorry, is this entire parcel. It's approximately 87, 88 acres, somewhere in that vicinity when you add all the three pieces together. The only way to enter the land is by this section here on Century Way and by this section down here on Clark Street. There is no other way to get to the lot. And because of the locations of the reserved entrances, it clearly is an odd-shaped lot in that it only has a very small amount of access on this side and a small amount of access on the Clark Street side. What we're here for tonight is, initially, when we had a technical review meeting with the planning board regarding the proposed development, the question came up about the zoning lines and the zoning districts and the zoning uses. Based on that, we filed a request for a determination with the building inspector. And based on his determination, there were lines crossing from SFR-1 district into the GR-2 district and from the G-3 district into the G-2 district. And because of the location of the majority of the land being in the G-2 district, we have to cross over the G-3 district to get to the G-2 district. That is why we're here before the board, again, requesting a variance to use a very small portion of the Clark Street, portion of the property to access the back land to move forward with the development. The proposal would be to construct single-family homes. So the use that will be proposed is completely consistent with the neighborhood and single-family use throughout the neighborhood. Where we come into the legal technical points, it boils down to use because this is really a use variance. And I think when we bring in issues that pertain to the special permit, the special permit is not here before the zoning board. Now typically, zoning boards are the special permit granting authority. Gardiner's bylaw and many other bylaws are now giving special permit granting authority to planning boards and other boards depending on what's before that particular board or what the request is. And in this instance, the open space residential development, the planning board is the special permit granting authority. I, in my filing, I omitted the...
Thank you.
...remand order from the land court. The remand order says for this hearing to take place, consistent with the motion that was filed to get the case remanded here. And what we filed in the land court essentially stated that the decisions that were rendered by the zoning board were inconsistent because the facts are essentially the same. We're crossing over a G-3 district to get to the G-2 district. And it seemed like the Century Way proposal was granted based on the reasons we established at the hearing, but the Clark Street variance was denied. And my memory is, at the time, the concerns were related to traffic, possible congestion, things of that nature. That is not the issue before this board. The issue before the planning board, I'm sorry, before the zoning board is use. This is a blow-up of this little, small section down here. When we first came before the board, there was some confusion as to where the actual zoning lines for the zoning districts were. When you review the deed to the property, this parcel runs along here. And we initially thought that the SFR-1 zoning line was actually down here, closer to the access roadway, when in fact, it's actually outside of the roadway. So this zoning line represents the G-3 district and below, and it represents the R-2 district above. And then over here, this is where the R-2 meets the SFR-1 district. Okay? Our variance request is for this area of land, right here. That's shaded.
Just the shaded portion?
Just the shaded portion. So this portion can only really be used as access. You can't really put a house here. There's not enough configuration. And anything you'd put here would essentially make the back land nonusable.
Excuse me, that shaded area, is that the actual shape of the lot?
No, the actual shape of the lot, it's sort of like a, it runs this way. Okay, so this is the boundary line, right here. And then it goes, the boundary line goes this way. So, and this piece here is, see this line here? That's a boundary line. And this is, this piece right here is what we initially thought was in the SFR-1 zone.
No, I understand that. I was just asking what the size of that lot is.
For...
That you were saying, in the gray, the grayed-in area?
Yep.
The shaded area. Is that the entirety of the lot we're talking about?
So in my original filing for the variance request, I made reference to a plan that's recorded at the registry of deeds. It's in Plan Book 564, Plan 48. That particular lot is 14,500 square feet.
It was shaped like a triangle.
Correct. So it's this piece here, this boundary line, Clark Street boundary line, the boundary line's a solid line here. And the zoning line runs right on the boundary line. And to answer your question, this lot, which is combined with two other parcels to make the entire piece, is approximately 14,800 square feet. And of that, the shaded area represents approximately 3,000, it's just under 3,100 square feet. I think it's 3,089 square feet.
So is what you're asking the variance for is only the shaded area?
Correct.
Then, I'm curious, when you look at this, the residential 3 does cut across it further down.
Correct.
So it's rural residential 2 that goes with the special permit. So what about that piece there? Because you also would need us to provide a variance to go across that part, wouldn't you?
So Section 675, 1150 of the zoning bylaw does specifically say regarding zoning board of appeals, you can hear and decide appeals or petitions for use variances. So it's clearly before this board. But the other thing that's important about the zoning bylaw is it does allow you to extend, when zoning districts abut each other, it allows you to extend the zoning line 50 feet in to the other district. So if you look closely at the plan, what we're showing is a second line that's right here. And that is the 50-foot offset of the R-2 going into the SFR-1 and going into the G-3 district. So the reason we're only asking for a variance for this section, we don't need a variance for the portion of the land that's already in the G-3 and the SFR-1 because we can extend the zoning line 50 feet. That's why the shaded area is what we're ultimately, if this board were to decide to grant a variance, that's the section.
So just to recap what you just said, Attorney Campabasso, looking at, and on the plot plan that I have, it's a blue line that's coming down right at the end of the shaded gray area. Yes.
That blue line, yes.
If you carry down the green line to the property, to the street, nope, going the other...
This way?
Nope, next, that one.
Down here, Ray?
Too far. You had it, Peter, right there.
Yeah.
So that's still, if you continue the blue line and the green line, that's 50 feet.
Correct.
So that's why you're not, this is not shaded grayed in...
Correct.
Because of the exemption within the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
And specifically, if you go to Section 675, 320, which makes reference to your zoning map, Section E does state, where a district boundary line divides a lot, the regulations applying to the portion of such lot in the less restricted district may be considered as extending not more than 50 feet into the more restricted district.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask another question.
Yep.
If you would go back to your drawing here.
Yep.
If you look at the blue line...
Okay.
To the right side of the blue line, it says R-2, Rural 2. Up, 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 this way. Go more to your right, that one. That's the beginning of the 50 feet.
Correct.
Now, your next line, the green one, to the left of that...
I'm going to grab my map that has the colors on it so that I don't miss your question.
So is he saying that you get 50 feet from here in? Okay, I was going the wrong way.
Okay.
So I just, I'll probably, if I can hold this to you.
Yep.
Here's the blue line. Yes, sir.
I can interrupt.
State your name and address, please.
This whole presentation, I cannot understand or see what you guys are talking about.
If you want to pull up a chair and come up closer, you can do that.
I'm the only one. So I do not understand.
Then move up.
Then if you can't hear, I only can say move closer because there's not much we can do.
Yeah, move your seat closer.
The acoustics are poor.
Do you mind if I move the...
You can move it wherever, do that, that's fine. Okay. See, this is my question.
Let's see.
This is 50 feet, 50 feet. What happens to this little piece?
That's what I was asking.
See?
Yeah, no, that's...
Because that's still G-3.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, I'll point at it.
Yeah, you may want to...
I'll point at it as I do it. The ones I'm going to talk about, this is the blue line.
Yep.
This is the green line.
Yep.
My question is, if you draw this down, continue it, there's your 50 feet.
Yep.
What happens...
But we can't.
To this little piece?
We can't because the actual, to this little piece?
Oh, where's my pen?
Yep, right here.
This little piece, right here.
That's in the...
That's still, this is...
It's in residential 3.
No, it's not because we can extend this G-3 down to this blue line. See this blue line here?
Mm-hmm.
So that's why the G-2 is actually, see where it says 50-foot offset to the R-2?
Yes, sir.
So it extends this way.
All right.
So the 50 feet is this entire blue line, not just going this way.
Okay.
All right?
If you want to try to explain that to them.
I missed it. What?
Is that my...
You can take it. Go ahead.
So, this question was, it's hard to see because this is not, this plane is not a color plane.
And this keeps going, this goes...
The bylaw does allow you to extend your G-3 district 50 feet into the G-2.
So he's saying, this whole section is exempt.
This is the line...
It's all part of this.
That extends...
Is that Mrs. Chicklin's property line?
This?
Yeah.
No, this is...
That's Mrs. Chicklin's property line?
Oh, yeah.
This is her land?
No.
Irene? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
This is her land?
Yep.
You want to go 50 feet onto her property?
No, 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 we're not going onto her property. No, we're allowed to extend the zoning line.
We approach it right into our backyard. What do you say?
Well, we're not.
Yeah.
We're allowed to extend the zoning line.
How many times can you extend the zoning 50 feet? If you extend it 50 feet there, then can someone extend another 50 feet?
No.
Does it work both ways?
If she wanted to, if her, if she wanted...
She doesn't want it.
If she wanted to extend, this SFR wanted to here for a use, if she owned the land, if she owned this land and she wanted to extend the zoning line 50 feet, she could.
Well, say she wants to.
What, how can she? She can't, she doesn't own the land.
Peter, what I'd like to do is deepen discussion. As you point out the lines, but not going on beyond that topic at this point in time.
So, what Mr. LaFon's question to me was, was what happens to this area here? Because he thought we were extending the line this way. But we can't extend this zoning line to here because the zoning line starts here and they run this way. So the zoning lines are shown, and with the extension of the 50 feet, that's the area that is being covered.
Court has another question. I'll pose it. Your shaded area, are you planning any kind of construction of any type in that area? On the shaded area right here?
Oh, just the roadway.
Hmm? Just the road?
Just the roadway.
So there'll be no home, excuse me, so there'll be no homes, no sheds, no buildings?
No.
Nothing? Just the road is going to go through there?
Just roadway, depending on, there might be roadway utilities, there might be trenches for water line, sewer line, but...
Understand, but no residential constructions?
No structures, no structures of any kind.
No structures, okay. All right, you can continue on now if you wish. Unless, let me ask, do my board members have any question right now?
No, I'm, I understand the lines.
Yeah, I think that was a big clarification for the board, is the line...
Yes. And I don't think that the, when we were here at the first time, the first pass, if you will, we were really not very sure about the zoning lines. The assessors' map showed one thing, the registry plan was showing another, and the deed was showing a third. So what is being shown tonight is in fact what the zoning lines are so that we do know that the request is through...
I'll give you an opportunity.
Is through the G-3 district.
Once again, what was the amount for the gray area? What was the total?
He said 14,500.
It was around 14,000 feet.
Said 14,500.
No, 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 the lot size...
Was 14,531.
For that member's question, the entire lot was 14,800 square feet, plus or minus. The shaded area is 3,089 square feet.
3,089?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for, just for comparison purposes, we didn't bring a blow-up for Century Way because that was approved. But on the first plan that I showed, that showed the entire project, I had the engineer tell me if we were before the board for the variance for the shaded area, what would it be? And it was actually 7,000 square feet. So that one, the area, was about twice, a little more than two times what we're asking for down here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? So with that backdrop, the variance request is a use variance for them to construct an access roadway, to build a residential subdivision. The intent is to file before the planning board a subdivision that will include a separate request for an open space residential development for single-family homes. If there were no request for an open space residential development, there would be no need for a variance because they could still go in and build a residential subdivision for single-family homes. I think a lot of the concern and a lot of the questions that are being voiced pertain to density. How many lots can you put? If you look at the blow-up of the property, you can see that the site consists of watershed protection area, certain sections, a lot of wetlands. So the site is not, while you can build and propose to build in those areas, it would not be the best use of the land. I think the bylaw created the open space residential district for a site just like this because you promote housing, but you protect the land because that's the intent of the bylaw. But if we had to give information as far as how many homes could possibly go... watershed protection area, certain sections, a lot of wetlands. So the site is not, while you can build and propose to build in those areas, it would not be the best use of the land. I think the bylaw created the open space residential district for a site just like this because you promote housing, but you protect the land, because that's the intent of the bylaw. But if we had to give information as far as how many homes could possibly go there, I think under a traditional subdivision, something in the vicinity of 45 homes could probably go up in that area. Plus or minus, that's not an exact number because we don't have actual hard engineering. And based on the open space, you probably could put somewhere in the vicinity of 75 to 85 homes in there. But we, again, we don't know because it probably would be less. There's touch zones, there's touch zone lines, there's wetlands, there's whole things that compromise the site.
Yep, and that's all under the purview of the planning board.
But that would all be under the purview of the open space special permit. And one of the things that I think is important for the board and for people to understand, if you review the open space regulation, one of the things that it says, and one of the things that the planning board will do, is it does give review of other boards, so that before acting upon the application, the board shall submit the application in plan to the following boards, which may review it jointly or separately. The Board of Health, the City Engineer, the Conservation Commission, and the Fire Department. So I don't know if the zoning board and maybe the police were omitted, but when I did speak with Mr. Borghardt, the planning director at the time, he did tell me that they send it out to everybody. So the board will have an opportunity to have input if it so chooses. But if, what we really need to focus on tonight is the request is for a use variance, and the variance conditions, as I argued in the past and I'll argue again, the three criteria for the board to grant the variance, I believe, are present here. Because of the shape and the soil conditions of the lot, the very small area, the configuration of this particular lot, it really only can be used for an access road. Or the best use would be for an access road. It's unique in the sense that all of the other lots have adequate frontage. This particular parcel belonged to a very large parcel of land that over the years since the 70s has been broken apart, subdivided into different developments. This particular site in question, there was a previous applicant many, many years ago that wanted to put forth a development, but did not go forward. This parcel is all that's left of the original farmland that was out there that has been broken up. And because of the two separate entrances, that's the only way that they can utilize this property. So in a sense, it is unique in that sense. As well as the topography. The relief can be granted without substantial detriment. A residential subdivision will be proposed. The review that will be required before the planning board will take into all of the, all the conditions or concerns that would be raised at a typical public hearing, where public safety, public welfare, utilities, everything that's involved in a subdivision will be considered. So that, and the other part of it is that single-family residential homes are allowed by right in the G2, in the R2 district, just like they are in the SFR1 district and just as they are in the G3 district. So they're not proposing a use, if you will, in the G2 area that's not allowed by right. And that goes to the third point, that the variance, you're not nullifying the zoning ordinance by acting affirmatively and granting this variance. It would be consistent with the other decision. It would allow the owner of the land to develop and put forth the best use, but more importantly, have an opportunity to try to apply for an open space special permit. Okay?
Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to the floor here. And I'm gonna, first of all, I'm gonna ask, are there any abutters to the property present who would like to speak in favor of? Anyone here, anyone abutter to the property, who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? A gentleman right to the rear.
Mr. Chair, can you come to the microphone?
Could you please come up this way because it's very hard? It's really an echo when you're talking. Your name and address first.
Right over to the podium.
I live at the other end of this, Century Way, I live on the corner of Brookside.
What is your name and address, please?
Lee Bradley, 105 Brookside Drive.
Thank you.
All right, so I live at the other end of this project, and I wanted to ask a question on the question that you asked about structures in those two areas where the variances are being granted. Who enforces that? So say you see a shed.
Building commissioner just left.
Yeah, go figure. So with that said, we had another issue with water this spring, in February, spring, winter, where it flooded the swamp lands again, came down, and it created probably about four or five inches of ice at the corner of Brookside and Century Way, where the city had to come with the loaders, try to scrape it up, try to salt it, and this is a problem that's been going on forever. What are they gonna do when they start building this?
Well, first of all, he's not gonna enforce that, but what you've got to do, I'm gonna just suggest, you've got city councils, you call them, but then the Department of Public Works has to get involved. You know, if you speak with Mr. Jean, he's gonna go right to the Department of Public Works and talk to them to address.
So they're gonna go off into the swamp on their property and do something? That's the problem, it's coming from those walking trails and all that wetlands back there.
You also bring in, now you've put another department, is the Conservation Commission. So I think between Mr. Jean, the DPW, and the Conservation Commission, those are the three parties that would have to address the issue you're speaking of. I mean, this board cannot handle, you know, if you've got flooding, that's not under our jurisdiction, but we're giving you.
I understand that, but look at the whole picture. I mean, it all should have been, you know, either approved or denied. And I, you know, I think it all should have been denied because they tried to do something back there 15, 20 years ago, and it was denied because of the, you know, the traffic. The traffic study that was done. You know, the police and the fire went up there and, you know, they said it, too much traffic, and the fire trucks couldn't get around, or, you know what I mean? Just wasn't big enough. And the water coming from the Pearlie Brook, the water mains, everything was not big enough to handle more expansion in that neighborhood, okay? That's what was, that's what happened 15, 20 years ago, but nobody can find that traffic study or anything about that particular meeting, okay? And I think you live in the neighborhood, so I think you understand what I'm getting at.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just perplexed on how this is.
When the, when the planning board meets to talk about the special permit, that would be a good time to bring this up because they're the ones that are gonna be listening to all the concerns for the development itself. And we are only focusing on the road. But to address your issue, that would be great to attend the public hearing for the planning board and let them know your concern and what has happened previously.
And you want to, I think David, Mr. Ante is giving you some good guidance, and did I see Bob Schwartz come in here tonight? There he is. That gentleman sits on the planning board. He's, now he's listening to this as we were talking.
Yep.
And when the planning board decides to hold, if we vote yes, if we vote no, they won't be holding a meeting. But if we vote yes.
So if you vote no again, right? Does that mean everything changes on the Century Way?
No.
So all that traffic's not gonna go down that really small road?
If we deny, if we say no, I'm not gonna do it tonight, but if once, if we say no, it just pertains to this application, that's all. Century Way's been approved, that's over there. That's out, excuse me, out of the realm now. But I think if, let's say if we do approve it, you have a great opportunity of you and your neighbors and any abutters who have an opposition to this, I'll call, get your ammunition ready. And Mr. Schwartz is hearing it. If a traffic study was conducted years ago, is it valid? It could be requested by the planning board for a new traffic study. And if you've got water problems and if your lines are too small, that's DPW and Conservation. But that's the department or the board that you have to address these issues. And you've got some very valid concerns, I'm sure, you live there and Mr. Anteau lives there. But you've got to bring it to their attention. And if you feel that strongly, then you just keep going after it till it's resolved one way or the other. I'm giving you an option, or David has, what you should do and where you should go. Instead of just shutting you off, no. We don't, I don't like to say no to somebody unless I can give them an opportunity to address their issue in the proper place.
So my next thing is, with respect, I'm hearing a lot of probables, maybes, eh, 45 to 80 homes.
Planning board jurisdiction. Because once they lay out the property, they're gonna clearly identify wetlands, boundaries. They have certain parameters under the wetlands that they can't build in, they have to be so far away. And that's, that's, and if there's a, I don't want to use the word edict, but if there's a decision to allow open space, now that all is taking away from the 80 acre, 80-plus acres that Mr. Campabasso has talked about. So, you know, I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna use the term maybe. You're starting with 80, you could end up with 55. Now that changes the dynamics of how many homes you can put in there, but that's what happens.
Coming down the back of my house.
Through that process. I'm being, we're being honest with you.
Oh, I, I rather honesty than being lied to again, so, yeah.
We're not gonna give you a line, we're giving you what the honest approach is, and we're your best avenue to voice your opinion.
Yep.
And.
I mean, because every time, every meeting I've been to, and every meeting I've come up and I've said the same things over and over again, it's just, it's an issue, so.
And I'll just carry it, if they, if the planning board votes for it, you and your neighbors or whoever have an option to appeal that decision. You know, legally, it does cost money when you bring an attorney in, but.
Doesn't everything?
You have the right, you don't have to take it verbatim. You can hire counsel and contest it, so that's your option under the law.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other abutters who would like to speak, or interested parties who would like to speak in opposition, sir? Come on up. This is sort of like in high school, you gotta get up in the mic and talk to the student body.
Oh, this has been a long time. My name's Mark Bowers, 26th Century Way. I'm also the chairperson of the Wilderbrook Condo Association on Century Way, which is 68 units. Doesn't sound like I can talk against very much, traffic, for example. One of our concerns is infrastructure, water, sewer, electric, so on, so forth. And again, it's not directly associated with the reason everyone is here tonight. I assume that would be different departments down the road. However, one of our big concerns, and again, I don't know if it's directly related to this or not, is everything along our property line, if you will, is uphill of our association. Very concerned about any potential groundwater runoff coming down into our properties. For the reason being is we just did a large project replacing all of our retaining walls. There is a ton of natural groundwater that's coming through our property from up above on the hill. Again, I don't know if this is the proper forum to, okay, thank you.
I just, I'll just qualify that, because we're looking at that little piece right there. That's all we're looking at.
Yeah, okay, all right.
But that's a great point to put it before the planning board, if it gets there.
Okay, all right. So anyways, again, chairperson of the condo association, we are not in favor of this being passed. If, I don't know what else I can say to this particular board.
You're voicing your opinion, and we're trying to guide you to the proper places.
All right.
If you can't talk about it here, where you can speak about it.
Very good. And I assume that if this were to pass, notification would come from the various departments that would be involved in this down the road?
Well, if we pass this.
Yep.
You'll just get a notification from our department.
Okay, but when it comes before the planning board?
Then the applicant, your attorney, Campabasso, you can make sure I'm telling it the right way. But if we do pass this, then he and his client will get together and file an application that go before the planning board at that point. That's when, I'll say, the wheels start to turn.
Sure.
They will send out notifications, and I want to go through, police, fire, DPW, conservation. You know, there's like five to seven departments. They have to notify of that project going forward. Hopefully, they respond. Not always do they respond, but they're gonna be notified, so if you have contacts in those departments, bend an ear.
Sure, but abutters will not be notified from the planning board?
No, they will.
They will, okay.
I'm gonna let City Solicitor John Flick speak to that.
Can everybody hear me without getting the mic?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this would go through a very robust planning board process. It would begin with a development review committee, which would include the various departments that you mentioned. The special permit application would follow the same method that variance application does, whether it would be public notice, it would be notice to the abutters, a public hearing that could be continued from week to week until the issues were addressed and the hearing was launched. So it would go through exactly the same process.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for taking the time to come up and speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Mr. Chicklin, take your, right at the podium.
Robert Chicklin, 300 Clark Street, got in a mess, and thank you for letting me speak. There's a couple of things, I'm not quite sure if I heard them correctly. Some talk about this being farmland, and it's been developed, and it's part of the property. Well, my parents bought their property off a separate person, and the land, farm property was owned by Alfred Chicklin. This property that we're talking about tonight is not the same parcel of land. It was never used as farmland, it's wildlife, wildlife. It was never used as farmland, I just wanted to get that across. It was never intended to be developed. As the farmland was basically, he sold it for big bucks and they developed it. So this isn't, was not part of that plan. My big concern, and it's, I'm glad to hear this gentleman from the condos, because I know personally that there is a big water problem. And you'll probably hear some other people say the same thing. And right now, where does all that water go? They pump it, and it goes across the street and goes onto my land. And that's okay, but if you keep doing what they plan on doing, I'm afraid that the ledge it's gonna hit, I think they're gonna hit a water table. And I believe that this water table could be serious. Be serious to the people that live there, me being one of them, and serious to our natural, well, our reservoir. Meaning that I'm afraid that there is a, there's a water table there. And everybody knows water goes down, so all the people that are downhill know what I'm talking about. And about the best use of the property, well, that's just someone's opinion. And my opinion is to leave it the way it is for the wildlife. And my opinion is leave it the way it is for the wildlife, conservation. That's the best use of property, use in my, my opinion. I mentioned the wildlife, it's a wildlife corridor, correct? Yeah, there's big concerns on the water. And I want to know if there's a topographical study done on it yet about concerning what I'm talking about, the ledge, the water tables, so on and so on. If you disturb that...
I'm going to interject here because you have to keep in mind, we're only talking about this little piece right here.
Yep.
I know you're talking in the whole.
No, that's the low point.
Your comments are well taken, well directed, but really, your comments, as I said to the other gentleman, should be directed to the planning board. And that's when you should be making that presentation to them because, you know, I mean, there's nothing here other than a road or
It's wet there.
Going in.
It's the low point. It's a low point and water is going to, it's going to come. You're not going to stop. And was I going to say, no?
You were talking about the water table.
The, oh, let's make sure I thought. When my mother, she had written you a little note. I didn't know if you were going to read that.
I'm going to read it.
Oh, you're going to read it, okay.
I am.
She wanted you to know that, that when they bought the land from, it wasn't from my uncle Alfred Chicklin. It was a separate guy who was a forester. And they brought, bought their lot. And when the agreement is in her deed, because her deed states that she has to maintain that little cop road that's there. They had to maintain that. And my father, myself, my, my family, we've maintained that as a access. So they have an access road until they put the cement blocks there.
I saw them tonight.
Yeah, I saw you sitting out there.
I drove by, wanted to check and I saw the blocks.
Yeah, black GMC pickup. Well, that's, that is their access road, according to my mother's deed. That is the access road to their property, which allows whoever wants to go out there. Basically, with all these years, it's been forestry, logging, et cetera, or wildlife or recreation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chicklin. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition, sir?
Hi, I'm Gerald Poria from three twenty-three Clark Street. I abut the proposed road on Clark Street. I just want to go on record, supporting my neighborhood, saying that I'm strongly against this, this project. And I'll reserve my comments now toward the planning board, conservation and city engineer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poria. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this application? I'm going to ask my board members if they have any questions. David?
No.
Mel?
Yeah, I, the one question I have is conservation or anyone else looked at this parcel for as, for wetlands or any other, any of that type of thing?
The, the site, the, the part that's before the zoning board tonight is not in or located near any wetland, designated wetland areas where the conservation commission would have jurisdiction over it. There has, they have started to do some of the site work where the topographical study and, and topographical plan will be developed. The flagging of the wetlands has been worked on, so those areas are starting to be identified.
Do they intend to look at this piece or parcel or not?
I'm sorry?
Do they intend to look at, does conservation intend to look at this parcel?
Well, they'll have, they'll have to as they walk into the property, yes.
They will.
And, and, and to, to, to answer your question, if in the review, it's determined that an order of conditions is needed, which clearly there will be orders of condition that will be needed for this project, this will be before the conservation commission. And it is one of the boards that the planning board makes reference to, so.
I do have two documents here I'd like to enter for the record that were submitted. One of them, Mr. Chicklin, you referenced it. And this is from Irene Chicklin. Purchased my land in nineteen fifty-five. Have maintained access to the property, logging, et cetera, until cement blocks were put in the right-of-way. I am against the road because it would be too dangerous. Irene Chicklin. And the other one is sort of lengthy, and I'm not going to read it all. I will put it here if anybody wants to look at it. If you do want a copy of it, you can contact Mariella in our office tomorrow and she will make a copy and can email it to you and take care of that. But I'm just going to have a couple of highlights in the beginning. It just says, "To the Gardener Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board, Gardener News and Greater Gardener Community." It's dated November twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, draft seven. Zoning case two oh two one dash oh eight dash oh three versus Harbor Classic Homes and zoning case number two oh two one dash oh eight dash oh four versus Harbor Classic Homes Century Way in Pearlie Brook Reservoir, PBR. This letter is to share the common concerns regarding the plans for an open space development housing at Clark Street and Century Way from members of your community living near Pearlie Brook and others who hike, fish and nature walk along its banks. Several of us have been sharing our concerns at the zoning board meetings, but want to be proactive and let our concerns be known to the larger community. Harbor Classic Home has been at these meetings, eight seventeen and ten nineteen twenty-one, with two of their administrators and their lawyer. At the last meeting, one of the letters in opposition to this development was not read. A number of members opposing the development willing to give testimonies are second, third, fourth, fifth and sixth generations living within feet to a mile from the reservoir and/or proposed development. Those over sixty years of age remember the dam being built and efforts to preserve the surrounding forest. She goes into some other items which we come under the purview of the planning board, so I don't want to go into them, it will belabor them. I am not aware of a document that was submitted that was not read at the meeting. We do our best to read every document that comes in, either if you bring it in personally or you mail it. We do our best to read it and, and put it forth. And you can see some of the issues she talked about, sort of reiterate what was presented by some of the people here. And so, you know, yeah, it's an easy fallback, but I'll say the proper place is the planning board if this goes forward. And they're the ones that are going to have to attack the issues that have been raised and look at them and they hopefully, you know, act in the proper manner that serves the city, the applicant and the neighbors in that area. But that's where it's going to come from if it goes that far forward. Those are the only two documents that were submitted to the board prior to tonight's hearing.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Anteau, go ahead.
I didn't know, does a right-of-way have any effect? If that's considered a right-of-way, does that have any effect or bearing on that piece of property? I've heard it twice now that that's an access road and it's in the deed and it's a right-of-way. I was wondering how that was influenced.
The access road that I believe Mr. Chicklin is talking about is not on the subject property, but it's on, I believe, Mrs. Chicklin, if that's the owner, her property.
But he mentioned that it's where the stone blocks are is, is the right-of-way. So that, that is
Yes.
the property here. So does a right-of-way have an influence on this piece of property that's in the deed?
No, it doesn't. I'm not quite sure I understand your question, but all I can do is explain the history as I understand it. I, the, the previous owner's name escapes me, I'm sorry. Who, who? Okay. When the Polterocks owned the property, they owned it for, for many, many years.
Okay.
At some point in time, there were disagreements on certain things taking place on the land, whether it be the four-wheelers, the dirt bikes or what have you. The cinder blocks that were put in the right-of-way were put there because they wanted to prevent certain things taking place on the property for insurance and liability purposes. That's why those cinder blocks or the, or those big cement block, concrete barriers were put there. That's my understanding. But prior to them being there, it was always open and that's how they actually accessed the land. And at some point, obviously with this proposal, those concrete barriers are going to go away and that access road is going to be developed into an actual access road.
Maybe.
Okay?
Well, I guess the, the question I would have for my clarification, is there any deeded right-of-way that's cutting across that property other than what you, you have to play this right here?
No, there is not.
So you don't know of any other deeded one?
Yeah.
Right, there's a gentleman back there again.
So those concrete blocks only showed up recently?
Sorry, but we won't be able to hear you. Name again, please?
Steve Bradley, one oh five Brookside Drive. But my memory serves me right, which, yeah. Those concrete blocks only showed up when the Polterick kids, the realtor company, when they started wanting to sell the, the property. Those only showed up when they wanted to start selling the property. Those haven't been there that long.
That, that's my understanding.
I, I can tell you by living down there what I saw. That's when those signs started going up for Polterick, that's when those concrete blocks showed up.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to offer comments? I'm going to say, yes, sir?
Bob LaBlank, two seven six Clark Street. I'm just wondering, I came to two of the meetings and I'm wondering what's different? If I'm missing something, what's the difference from what they're proposing today than what they were proposing before? Like, all of a sudden I hear Century Way was approved. We never heard of that. You know, I didn't hear nothing about that at a meeting, I just heard word of mouth. And then what's different now, what they're, what changed from the meeting tonight that didn't, was that the last meeting, from what, all the lines changed or what? The zoning lines or?
I think you touched on one of it, and I think Attorney Campabasso touched a little bit because there was some, regarding property lines, it wasn't exactly clear on regarding, uh, Clark Street.
Yeah.
Century Way, any party that was within the required area, when we made a decision, they received a letter of notification of the approval in that letter. If you're out of, and it's a three-hundred-foot circle around the subject property, if you're within that, you will receive a notification of a pending hearing.
Well, I got a notification, I'm almost, I'm right next to the law.
If you're out of that, you won't receive anything. You won't even receive the notice of the vote, yes or no. But there were some parts that were unclear regarding the boundary lines.
That's just what I was wondering, if I was missing what he was saying about the lines. Like, all of a sudden now the line comes across this way. Before, you didn't have the fifty feet, if I remember right, from the other meetings, you know? And now all of a sudden there's, they got a buffer, they can go fifty feet this way, they can go fifty feet this way. That's the only thing that's, I'm just curious, you know?
That's written in the law. And that, it was not clear when it was presented the first time. So it's really not up to the board to assist the applicant and their representative and say, oh, by the way...
I understand.
That's their job. And since we were not clear on everything that was happening, so the option is, do you want to approve it or you do want to deny it?
Okay.
I guess I'd rather, we would rather deny on the side of caution because they have the right to go to appeal and go to court, which the applicant did.
No, I understand. I just wanted to make sure there was, what I was hearing was the okay.
What we're seeing tonight is, at least I think in the presentation, he's trying to show where the actual lines are, the ordinance, the fifty feet you spoke of. And so everybody's clear on how that was arrived.
Are you clear? Okay.
You're welcome. Peter, you have anything to say about that?
I just would like to make some comments and then I would really like to, to clarify so that the residents understand what the process really will be.
Okay.
And if, if there is a member of the planning board here and the city solicitor is also here, if I misspeak or if I say something that's not correct, I'm sure they'll let me know. But we're here tonight for the variance. And it's, it's a use variance, to use that section so that an access road is going to be built for this particular proposal. I think what the board has to keep in consideration is the process. The reason the variance is needed is this proposed roadway, if the open space application or special permit is allowed, then these roadways will stay with a homeowners association. They won't become public ways. But one of the things that I think might be a misunderstanding or a misconception is the way the process is required to work before the planning board, there's actually two applications that have to be submitted, not one. The applicant will have to submit a subdivision plan. A subdivision plan that shows a traditional straightforward subdivision that's under the bylaw. If that's presented, the roadways would become, in essence, public ways and this becomes a non-issue because it's a public way. There's no zoning that applies to a public way. But because the second application would be an application for an open space residential development special permit, that is considered in conjunction with the subdivision application. So if the special permit is granted, it's going to allow a different type of configuration of the subdivision, a different type of density and a different type of lot size. That's really what the distinction is. But the process is a twofold process. It's not just one application for a very large development because there's a very distinct possibility that the subdivision can be approved, but the special permit can be denied. So all of the things that are being raised tonight, they're all legitimate concerns. They're justified in being here, having questions and being concerned. But the issue that's really before this board tonight is because there were two previous variance requests. One was approved, one was denied. The one that was denied was appealed to the land court. There were some preliminary hearings at the land court. It was determined that the case would be remanded to this board. And if you pay attention to the, the motion that was presented in the remand order, a lot of the issues that would be addressed with a special permit application should only be addressed at the special permit application, not for the use variance. And they, they have to remember it's a, it's a two-tiered process. If a traditional subdivision wanted to go forward, again, they'd be able to do that because it would be single-family homes and there wouldn't be a distinction between the use because that roadway would ultimately become a public way. So I hope that, I, I won't speak to their specific concerns unless you would want me to. I'll gladly speak with them after the meeting, but I don't want to get carried away in something that we're not supposed to be discussing at the public hearing.
Well, Counselor, I think, I appreciate the offer that after this meeting, if you want to have a conversation with Attorney Campabasso and he wants to speak, then that's, we don't have a problem with that. I just don't want to bring up on the table again, and I allow some of those comments to be made. and I allow some of those comments to be made, because I like to see the, the neighbors, et cetera, the abutters, at least voice a little of their concern, you know, to talk about it. Because if you stop them immediately, it does not serve a positive note, you know, to them and to what's happening. And I think you've done a nice job of clarifying the two-stage process, and if they want to talk particulars after this meeting is closed, well, I'm not gonna close it, I'm gonna leave it open, but after this meeting concludes, then they can have an audience with you as long as they want, and you can try to answer some of their questions. But I think keep in mind that it is a two-stage process, and those two stages have not really started yet, so there's some things you probably won't be able to answer, because it has to go through the, the two parts of the planning process. Is that clear enough?
Yep, and if possible, I, if, if you could somehow have the record from the previous hearing be a part of this, and then obviously the distinction is, I think the big takeaway from tonight is the distinction on the actual location of the zoning lines, and defining the area that we're really seeking a use variance for.
Correct. Okay, do you have any questions right now?
I, I have one. Just to clarify, is that if, if this wasn't gonna be open space development, and it was, I'll say, a, a regular development, you wouldn't need a variance for that piece of property? Is, is that what you're saying?
That would be correct, sir.
So, that could automat, not, well, not automatic, but as part of the plan, it could, it would be included, and you wouldn't need a variance, you could just go out onto Clark Street?
Correct.
I just wanted to be clear on it. Thank you.
And we would, and essentially, the roadway design would be as it appears on that paper, with more review, obviously.
Mel, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. I just want to view the property.
Hmm?
I want to view the property now. Do a visit.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, Mr. Cornett would like to view the property, and, I mean, as, as we know, we've been there a couple of times, so there's not a lot to view, but I think at least gives him an idea of where it is located, how it angles in.
So how would you want to handle that? Would you want to handle it like we did the last time, where the entire board is there, or would you want me to just arrange for him to be?
Well, I think we could, it would probably be a good idea that we set a time and a date, and the entire board can come if they wish.
Okay.
And, I mean, I always put this open to the abutters. If the property owner or the applicant is okay with them attending, they can attend. If they don't want them on the property, then they cannot go on the property. But you're not allowed to start a whole new conversation with questions, et cetera. You're there to view the property, and that's it. And that would be a decision you and your client would make.
Mm-hmm.
So if you want to set a time, we have two viewings coming up next Saturday.
Correct, 29th.
The 29th.
29th?
One at 9:00 and one at 10:00. We could pull you in at 1:00.
So you're, you're saying October 29th?
10:30.
10:30, alright.
10:30?
On the 29th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, 10:30?
10:30. We could be a few minutes late, but depends on the viewing before goes.
Just Clark Street.
Clark Street.
Century Way is not...
Century Way, we're not gonna look at.
No, that's done.
That's all done. We're gonna look at Clark Street.
Correct.
So how would the abutters know? Are they gonna just have to arrive, and we'll know yes or no, that they'll be able to go on the property? I just want them to realize-
That's the decision of the property owner and his client. I'm not gonna make that decision.
Right, but I'm, I just want to know the process so that if the abutters show up, and the answer is no, that they're not surprised. I'm not, I don't mean that. You know what I'm trying to say?
But that, that, that was the previous landowner who did not want the abutters on the property. So, when we're there, depending on how many people show up, we don't have a problem with them coming with us as we walk the land, because there's not really a lot of area we have to walk, so.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? Mr. Chicklin, you have a question?
Yeah, it was really good last year. Um, did you somehow see the documentation that my mother has, the fact that the property is needing, stating the agreement with the access road, and I think it's going to be 68 years that we've been maintaining that access road, so I don't know anything about land court, but maintaining it for 68 years, she has strong feelings that it's in her deed.
Well, I think if you feel there's some legal issue here-
Yeah.
-I would suggest you probably speak to Attorney Campabasso and bring it forth, but also let the board know what, what you're doing.
When you come for your viewing, we could probably show it to you. She had it last night.
Am I coming?
Are you gonna be at the site viewing?
Yes, sir.
If you could stop at my mom's house, she could show you the documentation that she has.
I would ask maybe if you could bring the, are you gonna attend the viewing?
Uh, if I get the date down right.
It's not this Saturday, it's the following Saturday?
Oh, Saturday.
October 29th.
October 29th.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be out of the country.
If you could secure those documents ahead of time?
I know they have them.
Have them with you, and you, you could share them at the time. I'm not saying give them to him, but you could share them, and you could discuss it.
Well, unfortunately, my mother's almost 90, and she couldn't make the meeting tonight, but she does have documentation.
Could she give them to you?
Um, she could give it to me, but I'm not gonna be around on Saturday.
Could you make copies and provide us a copy?
If you could make some copies.
Make some copies and give it to the board?
Yes.
I could do that. Okay, thank you.
They'll be fine. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we're just talking about the deeds, I'll just print them from the registry.
The what, John?
If, if we're just talking about the deeds to the property and about state of right-of-way, we'll just, I'll just pull them off of the registry of deeds, mass land records.
Can you pull that off for us?
Yeah, it's public records.
Yeah, he, he will take care of that.
Actually, I can, I can find it, I just couldn't find it. If we could pull up on my 1916-
Okay, thank you very much for that. Do you have any questions?
Not right now.
Okay, Mel?
I'm good.
Okay, Attorney Campabasso, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna call for a motion to continue this case to next month, then I'll move on to the issue we spoke about earlier. Do I hear a motion to continue this?
Motion to continue.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? None? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion, continue, approved. Next item on the agenda is communications that I received from Attorney Campabasso requiring or requesting an extension to the variance that was granted on Century Way. Because if no activity happens within a year, technically the variance goes away. He's asking for the, the allowed six-month extension from the approval, because a lot of it hinges on what happens here. So, you know, instead of moving forward, they've, they're requesting a six-month extension to see how this, you know, really moves forward, and then they can determine what they're gonna do. So-
Motion for the extension.
It's six months from the, from the date of the variance.
What, what is the date of the variance?
I think it was February-
It's, I believe it's in February.
February 22nd, I think, something along those lines.
Yeah, 'cause on the letter it doesn't state, but-
I have it, I have it in the correspondence I sent to the-
By August. Yeah, so they will have a decision before August.
I understand. That's why I was wondering why we're doing an extension this early.
Well, because if it gets to one month.
So we, by law, by mass general law and by the bylaw, we have to file the request for the extension before the time period runs for the variance.
Oh, no, I understand that.
So that's why I'm putting the request in, and I figured since we were here, we might as well address both matters.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of granting the variance, I mean, the request?
Extension for six months.
Say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? No opposition? Uh, extension?
Thank you.
Variance request approved. Okay, anything else before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I love this.
That's the only reason you want to do it, Mr. Chairman.
11 o'clock.